Winchester City Council, Tuesday, November the 10th, 2015. Thank you everyone for your attendance. Start meeting with a prayer and I will ask Councilman Snead if he'll lead us in prayer, please.
Heavenly gracious Father, thank you for our many blessings. Thank you Lord for being with us. Pray Lord that you'll guide us on what we need to do for our community. Pray Lord that you'll be with each of us as we go our separate ways after the meeting in Christ and we pray. Amen.
Fair one will stand. Chief Young will lead us in the prayers, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move into addresses and presentations and our request. Downtown speaker system, Ms. Roden.
Yes, you have in your packet and we did discuss this at the work session. The Main Street Director, Abby Pickett, and myself made a presentation to Winchester Downtown Program about the speaker system. It would be sixteen speakers that would be attached to the light posts. Originally started out as a wireless speaker system, but then we realized that because when we replaced our sidewalks, we did put extra conduit in, that it could be a wired system which would be less likely to have troubles with it. The total amount in your packet, they do show $23,070.94, but of course they did charge tax which we would not have to pay. When this was presented to the Winchester Downtown Program, they agreed that they would pay half of that fee if the city would pay the other half. So it'd be approximately, I can do the math exactly, but approximately eleven-five.
Okay, council, you've heard the request from Ms. Roden in regard to the downtown speaker system. Would be the will of the council?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve by Councilman Spencer.
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Bates. Discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Financial report, Martha Carroll.
You all have in front of you the financial report. Sorry, we've had some software issues, so I had not been able to actually open that report until today. Also on top of the actual report is the financial highlights for the first quarter. The general fund revenue is actually above expected margins, which is actually a little unexpected in the first quarter because we don't receive property taxes till October 1st. So that's a really good thing to go ahead and have our revenues up. The total expenditures for the general fund are running right at 5.75 below budget, which is also a good sign for the first quarter because we tend to see the first quarter being a large spending time for us. And the remaining funds are running under budget on expenditures, but that's also expected because that third and fourth quarters are typically the time when we see those spend more money. So everything is great right now.
Is sales tax increase driving the...
It is a portion. We've also seen, had quite a few property taxes paid that were delinquent, and so that's also been, and sales tax is a large portion of that. And across the board, we also receive different revenue portions, and so that from the state and even from some of our tax equivalents that are based on their numbers, and so if their numbers are good, our numbers are better. So we've kind of seen, I feel like the economy as a whole at least is stabilized and started to see that increase.
Anything else glaring that we...
There was nothing else. The first quarter report, I mean, it was really, really good to look at those numbers and see that. Like I said, with the revenue being where it is and property taxes haven't even started to come in, and they've done business tax a little differently, so we actually get those later typically in the year. So that's also to see, having had that revenue come in the first quarter.
As of this report, the percent of budget is what, is it?
Should be 25%.
25%, okay.
There are some line items that are above or below, but each department as a whole is at least right at 6% below that 25%. So that's really good at this time.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the financials. Would be the will of the council?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Womack. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Martha Carroll. Okay, next is unfinished business. Approval amendments of the October 13th, 2015 regular council meeting. Would be the will of the council?
Move to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve by Councilman Womack.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. Discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion stand approved. Going to new business, disposal of property. Ms. Roden.
Yes, we recently found out the city is the proud owner of two parcels off of Laura Avenue. We had a gentleman, Mr. Byram, that owns a piece of property, and when he received his tax cards, apparently he understood that he had purchased four pieces of property, and actually he only received three tax cards. And he started questioning that last year. We began looking into it, and then he kind of dropped it, and then when the tax cards came out again, it brought it up again. So we started that process and working with the courthouse, and we realized that the back corner piece that is adjacent to his property is actually listed to the city of Winchester, and also the triangular piece, if you're facing his property to the right, is also. And I believe they are deeded together. So I am asking, because we have no need for that, there is no road frontage for that property, which would make it an unbuildable lot, either one of them. So the only value would be to the adjoining homeowners. And I am requesting permission to dispose of the property, and we need to do that publicly, and we can either do that by sealed bid or govdeals.com. I think we will do better for the city if we do it by sealed bid. We would need a motion, one, to allow the disposal, and two, how we'd like to do it.
Okay. Council, you've heard the request from Ms. Roden in regard to disposal of his property. Would be the will of the council?
Mayor had moved to approve the sale of the property as a sealed bid.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilman Spencer, a second by who? Okay. Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next item, brush pickup program, we've actually decided to table that. We're still doing some more research on that to try to get all of our facts and figures together on that one, so.
That'll be on our next work session as well.
We'll bring you back to our next council meeting, I'm sure. Item C is the T-Dot Multi-Model Access 95/5% Grant. Avon.
We're coming, asking permission to apply for this grant. We can apply for a million dollars, so the grant would be $950,000. The city's portion would be $50,000. Engineering is eligible for reimbursement in this, and it would be for the Highway 50 like we're going to the Marina, and we will be doing it in three phases because it'd be an exorbitant cost, but we couldn't do it all for a million dollars. So we will start with phase one, and then have a phase two and a phase three, hopefully that will also be funded, but at this time we'll only be asking for phase one. It's a little bit different because we have to go before our RPO, and typically the two that are recommended by the RPO are granted, the grant award. We will have the application to them if y'all see fit by November 30th, then there will be a presentation on December 15th with a technical committee, of which Franklin County has seven members, and then the executive committee will make the final decision, which will be all the county mayors and one city mayor from each county.
And she mentioned we would do it in three phases. We would propose the first phase to be where the open ditches are at, so they would all be completely piped, which would allow for a shoulder and sidewalks.
And the police department gave us some excellent data on accidents that will help substantiate the safety risk in that area. And then we have the economic impact because of the Marina.
And would the first phase, would that be the million dollars, or is that a combination of three phases?
It would be, the first phase would be a million. A million dollars doesn't go far anymore.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. Okay, council, you've heard the request from Ms. Stewart. Would be the will of the council?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve by Councilwoman Bates.
Second.
Second by Councilman Snead. Discussion. How soon would, if we were selected, how soon would it start?
Like all grants, nothing this fiscal year. There would be, it would be next year, next fiscal year.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item D, surplus and self-police department vehicles. Chief Young.
Yes, sir. In your packet, there's three vehicles that was wanting the surplus, be able to sell those vehicles. There's a 2006 Crown Vic Patrol Car, it's got 111,000 miles on it. A 2002 Chevrolet Blazer that we purchased out of Drug Fund, that's one that Assistant Chief Dyers drove for years, it's got 103,000 miles. And a 94 Harley-Davidson Motorcycle, FXRP. We had donated from IPTM years ago, and we used it for training purposes, but due to some safety issues and things, that we decided it better offers train on the bikes that go be riding every day, so we have not actually used this bike probably in three years, and I'd like to get it on surplus. Sell it or possibly trade it for ATV vehicle that we can use around the city or something too. But we need to get rid of it, it's just sitting in the garage, taking up space, one way or the other. That's all I have, sir.
So...
Get your eyes on that motorcycle, I'm sure.
No, you said something that I'm curious about. You said something about the motorcycle, either sell it or trade it for a...
My pipe dream is to sell it for a, or trade it for a, like a John Deere Gator or something like that that we use, like Dogwood Festival, we always have to go out and borrow those type of vehicles for Highland Hog or Dogwood Festival, things of that nature. I'd like to be able, if I could find a way to do a swap for a vehicle that we could use, will be beneficial to the city. If not, we'll sell it and try to do it some other way.
Okay.
But I can't do either one without getting surplus to do, but I want y'all to know upfront what my intentions are on that.
But you haven't checked into if they would swap even, or if there'd be any difference or anything yet?
I have got some fillers out there right now. Yeah, the Honda shop was supposed to come look at it and give us some, probably haven't done it yet.
You might be as well, I'll sell it.
Probably will be, most likely we'll sell it, but I didn't want to come back and say, "Well, I traded it for something," and not be honest with y'all about it.
Okay. Council, you've heard the request from Chief Young. What's the will of the council?
Move to approve the sale of these.
Okay, a motion to approve by Councilman Womack.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spencer. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Tim Ford Bass Club lease. We've had discussion in a work session in regard to this, and at that time we had representatives from the bass club to come and talk about that lease and what they do in the bass club. I know we have a representative here this evening. I know you may not be prepared, but would you like to have a couple of minutes to just talk, if you will, up to the podium? Talk about it.
Mr. Mayor.
I would ask you to hold it, you know, brief, but give you an opportunity to speak.
You remember when we talked?
Yes, I do.
Again, I want to say thanks on behalf of the bass club for y'all taking this into consideration and listening to what we had to say at the work session in here tonight. And I know there's a couple of different avenues that y'all are looking at taking as far as concerned with our lease. I just ask you all, take a look at everything we do with the bass club down there, not just with private organizations within the community, but our joint projects with the city that we're doing, and take those into consideration as well. I know when we talked that there was two different avenues looking at it. If there's going to be a yearly charge to the bass club, one thing I was just thinking about, can we take into consideration the money that we would spend on the joint projects with the city in the parks of recreation as part of the payment for the lease? A good example would be is we're paying about $1,000 in the next week and a half, two weeks, to bring gravel and fill into the park area for everybody to use. Can we include that into the lease that that would be considered in any other future projects? I know some of the club members had mentioned different things that we could do with the city as far as maybe additional dock spaces down there, putting a boardwalk along the lake there to where you could bring not just bass boats, but all, any kind of boat up to the ramp area and increase our ability to put boats in there without a bunch of damage. That's just an example. So I would ask you all, would take that into consideration as well. Is there any questions for me?
Do you replace the gravel usually every year?
It hasn't been replaced, I believe, Mr. Mayor, in about 20 years, and it's just a major safety hazard down there, and we talked to Ms. Roden about it, and we said we would go out and do this with cooperation from the parks, and we're going to take care of it, make it right now, and that would be something that, you know, we're open to. You know, there again, the bass club raises those funds. If it's something that has to be done down there around the park that's going to affect that ramp area, that we would have, we would, you know, take it to the club members and say, "Hey, this city has come to us to help step in here." I don't want to put them on the line for any future projects, but we're taking care of it now.
Routine maintenance of the building?
That is solely on the bass club. The bass club members back in 1974 built the club, paid for everything there, you know, from ground up, and that is something that the bass club will maintain, is the building, the electrical, the water, we pay for all that along with the city and county taxes.
What have y'all done around the ramp in the past? You mentioned y'all might entertain some things for the future. Have you made any repairs or updates to the ramp area?
Some of the big stuff, I believe originally some of the bass club members, if I remember, way back to stories I have heard, because I wasn't here, Mr. Councilman, was they actually donated labor to help build the current dock or the dock that was there originally. The members stepped in, helped with that, that type of stuff. And that's actually where the idea came from, maybe extending the dock down to bank or cleaning that up down there and making that more usable for the public.
Okay. Any other questions for them? Okay, council, you've...
Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard comments from the bass club in regard to the lease. I know the lease is up and it needs to be renewed, so I would entertain a motion in regard to the lease.
I would make a motion that we renew the lease with updated verbiage as far as, I imagine it's fairly old, I think it's already been in the process of being updated, but I would make a motion that we renew the lease and appreciate the community partnership that they provide and not charge a lease at this time.
Second.
No lease fee, right?
No lease fee.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Snead, a second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, discussion, please. Just one comment to the council. This really would be no different than leasing an airport hangar. We do lease those, and, you know, I don't think the monetary amount that we discussed is, would be a hardship on them as he spoke in the work session, but just wanted to bring that point out to the council.
Well, I mean, the difference is the service they provide though, or airport hangar isn't going to host a bass club or a bass tournament and that, you know, all the things that they help facilitate that happen in that part of the park.
Well, the reference is just because of it is city property. So the ground out there is city property, and we have a lease with TDA for that property.
Yeah, what do we pay on that?
Well, I'll let Ms. Roden entertain that.
Okay.
And we're responsible for all the maintenance of the property, but we don't pay a monetary charge.
Okay. Okay. Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Could I have this comment? By chance. The reason I'm unable to do that at the airport is because it goes against our grant assurances. We are bound by law that we cannot do that.
Cannot do what?
I can't give a hangar lease.
Oh, yes. I understand.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. No other discussion. All those in favor of the motion, in which the motion was to renew the lease with a new lease document at no annual charge or lease fee. Would this lease be for an annual lease? Is that what we're looking at on this?
In the past, it was a long-term lease.
Okay. Councilman Snead, do you want to...
That was a 10-year lease?
Think about that?
Was it 10 years or what?
Oh, it was, it was 74, 84, 94. Yeah, the original was 30 years. We could revisit it.
Yeah, I think we need to revisit the term, the length of lease.
See if they're still doing the repairs and the maintenance.
Okay. So if you agree with that, Councilman Snead, you can change your motion. If not, we'll leave it as it is and...
I'd say for the sake of the motion, I would amend that to say, if I can do that, that it would be a 10-year lease.
Okay, all right. Okay. And my second, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the motion will be a 10-year lease with new lease documents with no annual fee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. So now we're ready for the bass, high school bass club to start.
That's right.
Okay. That concludes our business for this evening. We'll move into communications. I think I have someone in the audience that would like to address the council. If you would come forward, state your name, your address.
Yes, sir.
And if you will, you know, limit it.
I will be as brief as I can. Hello.
Okay. State your name and your address.
My name is Phaedra Simmons. I live at 106 Ninth Avenue Northwest, Winchester, right around the corner. I'm back here about three years now, love the area, having a little bit of a menacing problem, and I would like to address that. I've had made some comments to the local animal control that we have got an enormous amount of feral cats in our area. I have spoken with several of the neighbors, several blocks away. Until now, I haven't heard of an incident as bad as this. In my front yard on the 30th of last month, my four-month-old blue healer was attacked by a tomcat that weighed at least 35 pounds. That tomcat slashed my dog's eye wide open. I have now incurred very large bills for that. Previously, I've been told by animal control that the cat is a free-roaming animal, and the state of Tennessee will have no part of helping take care of that problem, except for maybe to get some traps, bait the traps yourself. I refuse to do the work of somebody that's already being paid to do that. On the second, I had a gentleman come out to my house, and I documented the fact that he said, his name is Junior, I do believe, said that he was going to come and bring some traps to my home and line them maybe on the side where we're having this feral cat problem. We had a condemned home right next to us which hosted 40 to 60. They multiply very quickly, especially when neighbors feed them. So, to this day, is the 10th, I have no traps. I have no one to help. I am aware there are only four personnel in the animal control. They have a very difficult time, they have two people on the road, somebody's on vacation, they have one person on the road. I would like to propose some new life into the animal control here because my daughter was 10 feet away from that cat. If we can get some help in doing this, I have no problem giving out my phone number. I will help you deal with this problem if you allow me. Thank you very much.
Well, you speak of animal control, and I can only imagine the problem that you have.
It's difficult to stand in the front yard, sir. Excuse me. You can't even get out of the house. There are massive fleas. It took us five weeks just to get into that house.
Right. We actually engaged the county to take care of animal control, so it's a county issue. I'm not passing the buck, but the reason that I tell you that is if you're wanting to participate or help in that endeavor, you might contact the county in regard to that.
Okay.
And Mayor Richard Stewart's office, county mayor, and he would probably be able to point you in the right direction as far as someone else to talk to or who to talk to, and then who to talk to in regard to your willingness to help in some fashion. But having said all of that, I'm going to ask Ms. Roden if she will tomorrow to talk to animal control or Mayor Stewart and see if we can't help with your problem.
That would be wonderful. There are presently several children on that street, none of them playing the...
Oh.
I would love that. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Councilman Snead, communications?
I don't have any reports, sir.
Okay. Councilwoman Alexander?
At the design review committee yesterday, we did approve some new signage for a precious new shop downtown. We've got some wonderful new people that have been, have come on board to serve with the RC.
Good. Thank you. Councilwoman Bates?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilman Spencer?
No report, Mayor.
No report?
No report.
Nothing? No comment?
Everybody, I think, knows now, spending money on... I am proud to see that we do have a new bed...
I am proud to say that we do have a new business on the square that opened up. I was really surprised at how much business they did do. Let's just keep supporting local business.
Ms. Rotten? Okay. I will mention that tomorrow being Veterans Day, there will be a Veterans Day event on the square at 11 o'clock, so everyone is encouraged to attend and pay your respect to our veterans. Comment in regard to the holiday open house that was this past weekend. From the looks of the square, I would have to say that it was probably one of the better ones that we've had in years and years. And you passed tonight the purchase, or helping purchase, the communication system around the square. I think that'll be a complement to this type of event and others, so thank you for that. The square, as always, looks great as far as decoration is concerned. The new drummer boy, is that what that is?
Nutcracker. Nutcrackers, toy soldiers.
Okay, nutcracker and toy soldiers, okay. I think that is a real addition to the square, and so thanks for that, and thanks for Winchester Utility for the installation of our lights, and we appreciate all the help that you give us in regard to that. Any other comments from anyone? None? Okay. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Got a motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Bates, and a second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Oppose, no. Stand adjourned.